Good evening, everyone. It is Monday, February 3rd, 2025. This is a continuation, sorry, this is a meeting of the Sherborn Zoning Board of Appeals. Tonight, we are continuing the public hearing on the application of Phoenix Partners Brushhill LLC for a comprehensive permit pursuant to provisions of Mass Law General Law Chapter 40B for a lot, 18 Brushhill Road. I believe the applicant team is here and there has been some, I think, significant updates in the last few weeks since we last met. So Bob, I don't know if you want to update us all on sort of where we are.
Yeah, I mean, I think that since we last met, I'm not sure there's been a, well, I'm trying to, when did we last meet? Was it a couple of weeks ago? Was it?
Yeah, you've, I think you've received Stan Tech's most recent.
Right, right. So actually, I don't, the, yeah, that's, that's right. That's the biggest news, I think, is that we spent three hours with the Board of Health, our engineers, myself and Paul, and, you know, talked a lot of, a lot of different things. And as you know, we, we are, as you know, Zach, but perhaps other people don't, we agreed to raise the system by a foot. And that was something that kind of felt, I think, like a compromise between ourselves and the Board of Health. And they have subsequently met for another three hours this past Friday. I was in attendance, but I did not participate. And they have sent you a memo with their thoughts about the waiver requests that we made, and I'll let those, of course, speak for themselves. But I would say that's probably the most significant activity. We did have conversations with the neighbors, with the Butters, as I reported to you last time. We have had further communications, but I think it's best to kind of leave that as a work in progress and not really germinate to the, to the meeting tonight. And I think that's about what I have to report. And I guess with regard, I'll just say what I said last time, which is we would like to go forward with the plan as presented. There have been discussions about the possibility of a move in, in two of the homes, the, a move in the location of two of the homes, which would not, other than the obvious, you know, waste lines and water lines and things like, things like that, would not have a significant impact. Or what I would say is a material impact on the Title V application and the Title V system. There will be a few minor things moving around if that change does take place. But I think, as I said last time, that if the change does take place, we will come back to you, the ZBA, with a request to modify the plan, assuming that it has been either, is in the process of being approved or is approved. Obviously, if you deny it, then we won't bother with that exercise. But, and if necessary, we'd go back to the Board of Health with regard to any issues that implicate the Title V application, not, of course, the local regulations. We would come back to you and discuss those as the process directs us to. And I think that's all I have to report unless somebody wants to remind me of something I've left out.
No, I think the septic was the biggest update. I'd rather you tell us in your own words than me try to sum it up. I'm not as close to the issue as you, and so I appreciate that. Darrell, I don't know if you have any sort of comments on the Board of Health's perspective on where we are. You know, I think we're nearing the end of this public hearing, so I just want to hear sort of your perspective and make sure we're we're all aligned on what Bob said. Darrell, are you available? Or I don't know if she's still on.
Yeah, I am. I, I hope our memo captured it all. I don't think I have much to be on that unless you have questions.
Jean, did we get the memo circulated to everyone? Just, I know it's available, but did we push it to the board? I don't know.
I'm pretty sure I sent it to the board.
Board members, do you have any questions for, for Bob or Darrell on the septic? You're unmuted, right?
I don't think I do. I just want to play back for Darrell and Bob what I think I'm hearing, because I think I'm hearing it correctly, which is that the new plan is okay with, with the Board of Health and with Tetra Tech. The guts of it being raising the system a little bit, adding that barrier and a few other details. And then Darrell's group did a good job walking us through how we should waiver that to get it inside the, the regulations. And so what I think I'm hearing from Bob is that's all right, that's, that's all correct. And we want the ZBA to approve the modified, smaller project with this new septic plan. How are my ears working?
Yeah, Rick, I, I agree with that. The only kind of further thing I would say or caveat to that is that, and this will come as no surprise to anyone, while we agree and are grateful that the Board of Health has recommended to you a couple of the, I think they're, what I recall are three kind of major waivers to their regulations that they've recommended, that are, they've recommended that you provide us a waiver on the three, what I would say are critical regulations. There's a whole series of things which they comment on, some of which we disagree with substantively, some of which we disagree with more procedurally, I guess I would say. In that, for example, it says several, multiple times in the memo that we will need to come back to the Board of Health. And of course, that's not the way it works with regard to local regulations. We don't come back to the Board of Health. We come back to you, the ZBA, and you take input, of course, from them. But it's, it's kind of procedural stuff. And then I guess the, I just want to make sure that, you know, we've presented a set of plans and we've asked for waivers. They have said, if I understand them correctly, well, they only need these waivers that we're going to recommend to build the project. But obviously, you know, I, sometimes I can't interpret the Board of Health regulations and sometimes they're interpreted differently from the way I interpret them. And so I just, I kind of want to make sure that we, we have a set of plans in front of you. If we, if you're going to approve the comprehensive permit, we want to make sure that we're going to be able to build it on those plans under your, you know, direction, so to speak, right? Because we don't agree with all of the, the various things. And lastly, I would say, at the end of their memo, they recommend multiple, I guess, they don't use the word conditions, but it seems like that's kind of where they're going. And while some of them, I, I agree with, you know, one is one that Michael Lesser also always brings up, which is, well, make a condition that they can't use, I'm paraphrasing here, obviously, but make a condition they can't use fertilizers on the property. Well, I don't use fertilizers on my property and honestly, I don't really care about whether fertilizers can be used on this property. But I don't like having regulations put on these four homes that aren't in place for the rest of our community. I don't think that's fair. And so I'm pushing back more, it's more of a philosophical pushback than it is something I have any serious concern about. And that kind of goes for the other conditions that they're asking you for, you know, what kind of ice melt we use. Well, I, you know, there, there are bad ice melts and good ice melts, and I hope the folks who live there use the better ones. But I don't think conditions should be applied that aren't in the local regulations today. And that's, that's kind of my take on the conditions at the end of their memo. And I think that covers, like, like I said, we're grateful that they have recommended to you that you provide the waivers necessary to build the project. We really are. So I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Bob. I'm going to go with Rick and then Darrell. I'm muted again, Rick.
Just, just a follow-up question, which is a problem, but, but also with an easy solution. It is not the board's job to figure out which waivers you need. It's always the developer's job to figure out which waivers that we are needed and list them. So we cannot, in this case or in any other, say, well, regardless of what the local regulations say, we're approving these plans. That's just not appropriate under the statute. Now, the good news is you have excellent outside counsel and I bet he can probably draft up a, a response letter to the Board of Health saying, our waiver applications are 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, just so we have something in our record. But we can't guess and it's not our job.
Well, we've already provided a detailed set of.
It just, thank you, Rick. And you, you pulled the words out of my mouth, so to speak. So I assume that we have all the waivers that you would like, Bob, on a list at this point.
We, we provided to you an updated, it was your suggestion, which was a good one, toward the end of the year that we provide an updated waiver list. We provided that. The Board of Health thinks that waiver list is too broad. As I said, I tend to write the waiver request more broadly because of my experience around the local regulations and the difficulty of interpreting what's, you know, situations. And so that's kind of where we are, Rick. We, we did give you that.
Yeah. If, if you gave you a list and said, this is our list of waivers, then I'm good. That's all I wanted.
Yeah, perfect. Thank you.
Darrell.
So I think, you know, Bob said pretty much what the point of some of our suggestions, that since the project is in flux, discussed that homes may move, that means that the relationship of water lines to sewer lines change, for example. And that is something that the Board of Health has to review on a final set of plans. So that would need to come back before us to determine whether it was Title V compliant. The other, the other issues about coming back to the board again was, hopefully you understood, as I have some voice in it for the Board of Health as the group that reviews these sorts of plans all the time. And for the waivers and the difficulty, we, everyone else who comes before the board provides a specific list of waivers that they need, and that seems to have been doable by other applicants, and that's what we go off of. So we had to look at it and make determinations about which of the myriad of regulations we were going to make recommendations about as they pertain to the plans. And that's what was done in the memo. So hopefully you find that useful. And then the reason for the conditions is that this is a project that does not meet the local regulations. We have very strong reasoning behind our local regulations. And this is also a project that, from the data that we know about the site, this is the largest system that could probably go on the property unless there's data that we haven't seen yet. So it is maximizing what could be done with the, that land and yet doesn't meet our regulations. And so we were trying to offer some suggestions about what might compensate the environment and the integrity of the groundwater, what other measures might be taken. And that's why we brought it up. Thank you.
Thanks, Darrell. Appreciate the input. Board members, any other questions or comments on the septic?
I don't have any, Zach. Thank you.
Thanks, Jonathan. Any, I, I think I'll open up the public comment. I think we're nearing the end of the public hearing portion of this unless there's other concerns or comments from the board. So we'll open up to the public now. I see Dan just popped on. I don't know if Dan Hill has any comments.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Dan Hill, I'm, I'm an attorney. I represent the directed Butters to the project, the Lauterbacks and the Natals. I, I did want to just kind of echo what Darrell had just said about conditions that the conditions, the purpose of conditions in a 40B project is to mitigate the waivers. So I totally agree with that statement that but for the waiver of various dimensional requirements in the zoning bylaw and so forth, this, this level of density would not be allowable on the site. At the condition such as limiting pesticides or fertilizers and so forth is just a reasonable way to mitigate against the adverse impact of a, of a waiver. So I just want to set that record straight. Mr. Murchison had made a comment that he is talking to my clients about some mitigation and some compromising that might happen with respect to the project. I can confirm that that's accurate. We are in the process of sharing some ideas, I would say. And we're very hopeful that we can get to a point where my clients are satisfied to the best they can be with, with the project, but it's still, still open and we haven't finalized anything yet. So in that, in that vein, Mr. Chair, I would, I would appreciate the opportunity to be able to provide some draft proposed conditions for the board's consideration. I don't know what your schedule is going forwards. You're going to have another open hearing. But as Attorney Haverty can probably tell you, he and I have worked on several of these types of projects. It's often convenient for the hearing to be, to be left open so that the public can have input on the draft conditions or the decision itself. So just want to throw that out there as food for thought.
Rick, what are your thoughts? You're, you're my procedural attorney. So you didn't know, you didn't know.
I'm retired. I'm not on anybody's malpractice policy, so I'm not anybody's attorney, but as a former board chair.
I volunteered you for this role, so.
As a former board chair and Dan Hill and Paul Haverty can keep me honest, I think if, if the developer consents to leave the hearing open, there can be the sort of discussions Dan Hill is talking about. Once the hearing is actually closed, again, I believe the two attorneys will correct me if I'm wrong, then the, the public gets to watch us figure out our decision, but they don't get to comment because the public hearing is closed. Dan, Paul, how did I do?
That's right.
I agree.
So I guess the question is, are we, how do, do we enter deliberation phase and leave this open? How, how does this sort of work, Rick? You know, like, you know, in terms of our process? So I'm happy to take input for, you know, conditions and, and such, but, you know, I want to make sure that we're moving along as well.
Right. Well, that, that is a negotiation between you and Mr. Murchison. He, he, he has the legal right to say, well, the heck with you guys. I'm not giving you any more extensions. I demand that you make a decision one way or another. He also has the legal right to say, given all the other things that are going on here, you know, I, I think it's, it's worthwhile to leave it open so that negotiations with the neighbor can come to a conclusion. But he, he does have the right and authority to compel us to make a decision because I, Paul Haverty, correct me. I think we're over time and living on extensions from you guys now, right?
That is correct.
Yeah.
Are we allowed to consider conditions that someone submits to the board? I mean, I guess that's the question. So I mean.
Yeah. If your decision. Once, once the public hearing concludes, once it's been closed, you're not allowed to take any more input. And you would be at risk if you did take additional input. So my, my recommendation. You, you can't take suggested draft conditions, even if it's by email, once the, the public hearing has closed.
Right. We, we can take them from amongst ourselves.
Correct.
Prior decisions, but we can't take them from third parties, is what you're saying.
Correct.
Okay, got it.
Thanks, Paul. I appreciate that advice in our favor. So I, I would say, you know, Bob, you know, I think we need to give maybe a reasonable time, you know, Dan, a reasonable amount of time, another week or so, but I, I want to close this and move forward. So that would be, that's my personal preference.
And, and Mr. Chair, I, I mean, if you, if you're inclined to keep it open to allow for suggested conditions to be submitted, would you then be inclined to shorten the time for your deliberation? So that you would already have draft conditions anyways, you know, so if we extend it by 10 days to allow you to have another, another meeting and discuss the draft conditions while it's open, would you agree to, you know, issue a decision within 30 days rather than 40 days? So that the, the ultimate amount of time isn't really being extended?
I, I generally would be inclined to give you that except for my, my schedule is so bad right now that I to just keep up. So I, you know, I, that is a fair proposal, but I, for me right now, I need as much time as I can get. So that's just, that's just where I am. So.
Oh, that's fair.
Rick.
I was just going to say, the decision time goes by much faster than you think.
Yeah. Having written, having, having voluntold to written one of the first opinions, thanks, Rick. And yeah, it's, I just, I, I can't agree to shorten that time right now. I'm too diligent on enough, on enough things. So Bob.
So I guess, Zach, I, I feel a little bit like the last two weeks have been about, and I think the Butters knew this, have been about gathering their final thoughts. And, you know, I, I think I made it really clear to everyone involved that I wanted, and I thought frankly, you wanted to close it tonight. That was, that was certainly my goal and I, I understood it to be your goal as well. And I feel like the Butters had the opportunity over the last couple of weeks. And in fact, they asked to make a presentation tonight. And if there were conditions they wanted to suggest, then I, you know, I think it would have been great to get those, get those in. You know, if, if the Butters would, what I, what I'll say is that we have until, under the extension we gave you, we have until Thursday. If the Butters would like to put something together, you know, tomorrow and get it in, and obviously, we're going to want to comment on that and respond to it. You know, can we wrap this up, wrap this up by Thursday on the timeline that we, we kind of all set out, you know, a month.
Bob, that, that wouldn't work simply because the board would still need to, to meet in a public hearing to formally close the hearing.
So we can, thank you, Paul. Can we close the hearing and start deliberations in the same evening?
Yes.
So I think that's, that would be my proposal is that we give this, we pick the next meeting to essentially close out the public hearing in the first few minutes to deal with whatever may have come in. And then we start deliberations. And I would ask also that the board, you know, hopefully we'll have had an opportunity to see whatever proposed conditions come in before that. But I, I also would ask the board sort of have some, you know, bar napkins of notes of what they think they would like so that we can move forward. How does that sound, Bob and Paul?
Um, so what are we, you know, what are we talking about?
A week, so I think.
Yeah.
Next week, if, I think next week is probably a good week, the week after, school vacation week. So I'd like to probably, if we were going to theoretically close this hearing out this week, I would like to have, would have had a meeting next week.
Well, how about, how about the end of next week? That, that, that gives you kind of a week and a half or even a little bit more than that, right?
I see, Jean, the most important person's hand raised.
You have, you have a meeting scheduled for the 11th next week.
Which is the first day.
Which is, that, that's the, that's the day that ended up working for us, the 11th.
Yeah, the 11th, great.
So why, why, could, could, could we extend this to the 11th if, if Bob and Paul were amenable and then take it up after 41?
Yeah.
That'd be great.
You got, you got a bunch of hands up, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Labby. And then Mr. Hill.
Yeah, just with regards to schedule, it would have to be the 11th. I have to travel to Virginia for a military funeral, second half of next week, so I'll be fully out of pocket.
Okay. All right. So the 11th, Dan, is that, I see your hands raised.
Yeah, the 11th works for us and we can get draft conditions to you in advance of that date. But I just want to make sure that, that the applicant understands that once the hearing is closed, even he can't make comments on draft language in the decision and there can't be any back and forth. So it actually just, it's beneficial to everybody that, that, that be allowed. And if, if he's insisting on closing on the 11th, that is what it is. But it, it just strikes me that it's, it's actually better for the board and for the applicant generally to keep that discourse going on so that that written decision can be as good as it can get, but.
I mean, the goal is, the goal is to close the hearing at the next meeting in short order. If there's comments and discussion needed, we'll deal with it right away. And hopefully we can, we can move, begin the deliberations, I think, is, is, hopefully we can. If not, if we get into, you know, a protracted discussion, then so be it. But that, that is the goal, in my mind, anyway.
Dan, would it be, would it be reasonable, Dan, for you to get those draft conditions to us by noon on Monday so that we have 48 hours to respond? Is that a fair request on our part?
I, I think so. I, I shouldn't have a problem with it. I would just have to run them.
Actually, that's not 48 hours.
I was checking your math.
Exactly.
My math is the 10th.
Any chance by close of business Friday?
That might be harder. I, I got to draft them and then the clients have to look at them. And so I think Monday, Monday morning is probably the best bet.
Okay.
The, the, this isn't going to be a big surprise. It's, they're, they're going to be consistent with what we've been talking about for the last few months.
Rick.
I, I wonder if we could have confirmation from the applicant and his counsel that will be extended through a date after the 11th, please.
Yes.
A couple of days after the 11th, I believe.
Yeah, I, I'll, I'll get you an extension letter to the 13th or the 14th is Friday. I'll give you an extension letter of the 14th.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Do we, do we need to vote on the extension or is that just going to? Okay. So I think we have a game plan. We are going to meet on the 11th at seven with the intent of going over the submissions of conditions from the Butters and closing the public hearing, getting deliberations on this project. Any comments or questions from my board?
Would you like a motion?
I would.
Just a, just a quick question, just so I understand what we're doing. Will there be the ability for us or anyone else to speak on the 11th?
Yes, in the beginning part of the hearing. It'll just be the rest of.
But you, we don't anticipate a long session. We don't anticipate a long public session that night.
That, that's not my anticipation, though. It should be short, I think. Just so we have an opportunity to, for you to respond publicly to any of the proposed conditions and move on.
All right, I have a motion if you'd like.
I would.
I move that the ZBA continue the hearing for Brushhill Homes to Tuesday night, February 11th, 2025, 7:00 PM. Based on the developer and council's representation that they're going to extend the time period through, through the 14th. That's my motion.
Seconded.
I'll give it to Tom. Vote by roll, Mr. Fitch.
Aye.
For Labby.
Labby, aye.
Novak.
Aye.
McBride, aye, continues to the 13th. We'll have a meeting on the 11th, leaves to the 13th.
Thank you.
And a second motion, I believe.
To adjourn?
That would be the one.
Okay. Well, Mr. Chair, Grand Exalted Chair, I, I move that we adjourn tonight's meeting.
Great. Vote by roll, Mr. Fitch.
Fitch, aye.
Labby.
Labby, aye.
Novak.
Novak, aye.
Bright, aye. Thank you, everyone. We'll see you on the 11th.
Good night.
Thank you all. Thank you all.